All this meeting is a very independent school district. The record show that the board members are present. This meeting has been due to call and notice this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Would you all pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for the many, many blessings that you bring for us. We thank you for the opportunities you've given us to serve on this board. We thank the opportunities that you've given us to be able to, in our own small way, affect the lives of children as they grow and as they learn. Be with us today as we make decisions that all decisions we make be within your will for us, in the heavenly name of God. Amen.
Well done. Superintendent reports, Mr. Brown.
Okay, let's start with student staff recognition. I've got some recognitions to give, list of students to celebrate. So first, we start with our Ranger basketball team. Levi Sparling placed third out of 259 participants in the Lake Texoma competition. I think that's significant, third out of 259. Press Pass Sports Player of the Week, top 10 Texas Panhandle football performer in by district, Cooper Schilling. A well-deserved honor, I think. Texas Farm Bureau Player of the Week was the Perryton Ranger football team. Built For Tough Player of the Week for Foray was Julian Cervantes and Amarillo Globe News Super Team. Julian Cervantes was on the second team and Mally and Vela and Aubrey Darty were honorable mentions for their squads. October Texas Farm Bureau Student of the Month, Sam DeSantiago. So you guys join me in celebrating those students. Rotary Students of the Month for November are Savannah Shigoda and Evan Hernandez. College-bound students, these students have been accepted into college Samantha Flores, Jocelyn Hermosillo, Savannah Shigoda, Tiana Hill, Evelyn Ontiveras, and Raya Harkis. FFA Quiz Bowl team has advanced to area and Perryton Junior High. Big deal. But let's first, let's give the students just a celebration. And last, and I do want to maybe set this off a little bit just because it's a big deal. Perryton Junior High was recently selected and recognized as one of the top middle schools in the state, which means they're in the top 40%. So I think that's a, that's a significant.
Huge.
It's huge. So can we just take a minute and separate that and just recognize that one individually? That represents, right, just take a little liberty here, that represents a lot of hard work on the staff, on those teachers. It represents them raising their expectations for kids. It represents them really just throwing their whole selves into it and doing what it takes to raise that, the entire school, raise it up a level. And so I'm very pleased being able to announce that. For the rest of my report, just to briefly run down a few things. First of all, we are very close to the process of selecting our design builder. And we will be most likely selecting that at our noon meeting that's scheduled for the 28th, right after Thanksgiving. We have just, we, the one that we got back has turned in his request for proposal today. And we should have everything ready to select that, select him as the design builder on Tuesday. After that, the process is, if you guys so wish, in normal processes, you would authorize me to negotiate a contract with you. And then we bring that contract back to the board probably at our December meeting for final approval. And at that point, we begin, with your approval, we begin to get to work on our buildings. So everybody is very anxious to start that. So we're almost through that process, and we're almost ready to actually start working on design, starting the construction process. Couple other things, and I'm hopefully not going to steal any of my directors under, so I'm going to try to stay away from some of their topics because I know they're going to, they achieve it. Just a couple other things. We recently had a gentleman come in for staff training. His name is Doug Curry. He's out of Amarillo. He does a training that is really about classroom management and setting up your classroom for success and helping kids learn behavior and giving them the ability. And I have gotten numerous comments from both veteran and new staff that tell me that that was one of the best trainings they've ever been to. It was a half-day training. He didn't let them out early, and they stayed all the way to the very end, and nobody complained about that because it was so, it was very practical. He's very practical about how to set up your classroom, how to deal with children, how to have high expectations for their behavior, and enforce that. And so the staff was very, very appreciative of that training. We're going to share that with you guys. Couple of other things, we do have a spirit bus that has been arranged for tomorrow to take some of our students so that we'll have a little student cheering section at the game. And we're excited about that. We have, several people have volunteered to help with those offenses. Several of our adults and teachers have volunteered to ride that bus, which is quite, we're good for them. We appreciate that. We've got a great group of students that are going to be on that bus, and we should have a good, a nice little student, student section. How many students? Twenty so far, or nineteen, I think is what we've got. Nineteen right now. So it may be a little small, but it's going to be more students than we have, so I'm really glad. I hope you guys have gotten some personal and direct appreciation from the staff. I've heard lots of people saying thank you for the retention and recruitment stipend that you guys authorized the last time we met. That went out on Wednesday, and I've gotten lots of thank yous for that, some very specific. And I think you guys got an email from me earlier today about one, a specific meeting. And I, that makes me feel very good. I know you guys value our staff, and you value each one of them. So I want to say thank you for supporting them in this way, especially with inflation and the holiday time coming up. Thank you for releasing some of those on that chart, Stan. And finally, a little bit of just personal news. I am by, I think it's 4:15 this afternoon, I'm officially in contract on house.
Hey.
So Jill and I are thrilled, we're very excited, and we're going to share that with you guys. So once we, once we get in there and get it settled, I want you guys to come on over and take a look and help us celebrate us finding a place to.
Well, thank you for buying into our community.
Yes, absolutely. Glad to. We love the house and we hope we're there for many years. And I will, let's see, last thing to go on the list. You guys should have gotten the policy update 122 because I said these, these will start coming through, we have a weekend legislative session, so they'll start at the end of the week. This will be on our agenda for the noon meeting number 28. I haven't read deeply through it, I've got a cursory look through, looking at some changes. I haven't seen anything yet that's just out of whack or controversial, but I've kind of looked at it, people are working on it, and I appreciate that, and we'll deal with that on.
Wes, have you done the equity word search yet?
I don't know. I actually have done nothing other than pray in here. I've done nothing yet. But I figure Thanksgiving break, what better to do during Thanksgiving break?
You see. I still worry about your life sometimes, but yes.
Since we don't have a lot on our agenda, we could just share everyone we can chat out loud.
How about you do it over your Thanksgiving break?
I'd say gee, how's yours?
Maybe they, maybe they read through it at the conference. Eight dollars and 50 cents, Wes.
Eight dollars and 50 cents.
If you're wondering how much it would cost to mail a board book.
Which is, I think we're still a lot better off dropping them all.
Absolutely.
I am a little concerned with, those observers decided that whatever receptive we played in caused such an uproar because mine were on the boards in 2000. Yeah, it's gone to my mailbox, bottom of my house, it's just a box that says mail. But, you know, that's pretty dark. Okay, that everybody's a deal, that's my, my report. Any questions for us, Brett?
One, just real general question. I think I was down in Austin about a month ago or so, and sitting with a group of other school trustees, what is the responsibility of TASB for, to board members?
TASB, well, we're a member, they're responsible to us and share our opinions and responsible to listen to us and respond to our needs. That's where members of that.
So if you were, say Bryce, for example, was getting harassed by people in the community, is that a role that TASB would step in on?
Um, that probably, they would probably have an opinion on it. They, I'm pretty sure they wouldn't support it, but.
The harassment?
What's that?
Did he say they won't support the harassment or won't support the?
I don't think they would support it.
Okay, thank you.
In general, they really are, they support board members, school board members. They would probably also want you to talk to your local attorney and deal with that on a local level. There would probably be action.
Well, and I'll say this just because I think this is reinforcement for us, is that there were a lot of things going on in other schools there, since we tend to, tend to think they're on Virginia where everybody's getting tore up and everything else. I was sitting there with a group of people and I said, not, not 100% agreement with everything, but we pretty well are in touch with the values of the community, I think. That's not the case down south. And so there, there's, there's some harassment going on, and it's generally directed toward the people that are trying to control the CRT issues and the wokeness. So they're, they're, the ones that are saying no are the ones on the brunt of the receiving end. So I'm kind of curious what TASB, what their opinion would be, I guess.
I think they would, you know, as like Sarah said the last meeting, as we make our voice known and keep some of that out, I think they would be able to, they would definitely not support harassment, but especially if the opinions of what getting harassed for lineup, of what TASB is put forward, what the members are saying, so they're going to, they're going to defend it, I would say.
All right, thank you. Sorry I didn't miss Sarah's presentation last time, so.
Maybe assist in defense by providing information, by providing assistance toward a local attorney who was handling a case or a local county attorney who did his prosecution case or something, they might have some research to do.
Yes, they also, you know, if, if the legal case comes up, as a member of TASB, and we buy into this, they have legal defense. So that if something comes up that is broad and scaled, they can also provide some, some legal support and defense.
Other questions? So now, let's go to campus reports, we'll start with Ms. Jackson.
Good evening. I want to reiterate what he said, you know, there were some happy tears, literally happy tears on my campus from staff members when they got that stipend. And the timing of it and all the things, and, and, you know, I just appreciate you guys backing that up and all the work that went into making that happen on behalf of my staff. And we talk about llamas a lot, y'all may not know what that is, but that was part of that training, and we've, the training they had, usable stuff. Like they could take it and use it the next day, and that's valuable.
You make it sound like an exception.
It, it is. It is, and frankly, the, the best training that my teachers have ever been to.
Good.
And they walked right in and changed things and bam, so cool. So it was good. And I want to update you guys just a little bit on the DAEP, just completely full until January. And we're running 18 to 20, 20 is really way too many for the slots I have, but I, it is what it is. And so we're trying to make it all work, and we're running two rooms. And then I had three graduates now instead of just one that was in my report, so we had two this week that finished up, and just really exciting to watch them start coming and going. And so we'll stay right around 20 probably from now on, as students graduate. But I have like maybe six more that could graduate before Christmas. So it's exciting, but thank you guys. Any questions? Okay.
Hi. Things are good at the high school. A couple of our English classes, we're showing the gratitude this week, so Ms. Harrison, Ms. Van Alstel's classes wanted to send a thank you poster to the board, thanking for all that you do for us. Do you have any questions for me?
Thanks, Aunt Tori.
Sorry I wasn't here earlier.
Congratulations.
We were Ranger camping, but thank you so much. It was really exciting to get that email and see that and see that we're, we're making such great progress and, and we just, we know if we set the bar up here, the kids will rest in peace. And they, they are and they have, so it's, it's a great time at Junior High, so. Anything for me? And I want to echo what everybody else said, thank you so much. Like it was just so great to see. I had staff members come up and say, did you know about this? And I said, well, I might have had a clue, but it was such a great thing to see, and so, so much appreciation all the way around, so thank you. Yes, yes. Thank you. Enjoy.
Thank you. Oh, no. Excuse me, Bryce, sorry.
It's all great at Williams. Oh, no.
You won't be able to say it.
It's all great at Williams, and thank you all so much for the, the check. That means so much to so many people, and you know, money's tight now, and every little bit helps, and it sure did a lot for the morale of our staff to show them a little appreciation because they, they work hard, and their, their labor isn't always shown. I mean, we don't always get the results we want, but they are very, very good people, and they work very, very hard. And so, like I said, it's all great at Williams. Thank you. And we're all llamas too. Ask anybody, we are llamas.
Fast llamas.
Fast llamas.
Fast llamas.
Sad llamas.
Yes. Wright and Kinder, things are going great. STEAM is just on fire at both campuses, and the kids are just loving that addition to the campuses that I added in the report a month or so back, and I just want to reiterate the fantastic job that Kami is doing, really giving those teachers ready-to-go activities so that they can easily be incorporated into what they're already doing, because the teacher's time is, yeah, I mean, we spread them very thin with all the things that we ask them to do, and so having something, you know, someone listening to what their plans are and coming up with an activity that's easy and ready to go is fantastic. We celebrated our pairs this week, and you know, neither building, and I know it goes for every building in the district, we could not be the schools we are without the pair professionals. They worked so hard, and their job is, you know, difficult, and they always have a smile on their face, and they are asked to do things different every day usually. So I just really want to say we appreciate all they do, and, and thank you for that, the money and the just opportunity that that gave lots of the families. So thank you so much. And UIL is up and running for our second and third graders. We compete December 1st at Frank Phillips, and the kids are thrilled to death, and you know, it's just a neat opportunity to see those kids get to compete in academic things. And so our riders have already done their competition, we're just waiting on results. So those are just a few of the things that are happening at Kinder and Wright. Do y'all have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
I just want to echo that the cafeteria ladies were more than shocked and surprised, and I had kind of let the managers know something, but I didn't let them know, and they were very, very appreciative, and everybody is very appreciative of that, and we do appreciate that because, you know, it, it does help the morale a whole lot, and it helps, helps you want to keep on going, and, and they just appreciated it all, and I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you.
AD, what? I really don't have anything to add. We, we had a huge Friday night last week. It was huge for the culture of what we're trying to do athletically. It's been a semester that has faced a lot of challenges. We've had a lot of pushback from kids that didn't live up to the expectation, and like Ms. Wheeler said, you set the bar high, and they're either going to rise to it or they're not. And I told y'all when I interviewed for this thing that we were going to probably have to trim some fat, and that's happened, and it's been hard, but seeing our kids celebrate the way that they celebrated and the excitement that they had Friday night was well worth it. And I think that it made them a little bit more hungry to go get after it this week. Another very winnable game. Hope y'all can make it down to Iowa Park tomorrow, it's going to be a lot of fun. Other thing, basketball's up, up and going. Boys' basketball's kind of put on hold with most of our athletes still being out on the football field. Girls' basketball, they're three games in, they're playing their hearts out. It's been a lot of fun to watch. Coach Dordy's getting after it. He, he is fiery. Coach Aruda refers to him as an angry elf sometimes on the sidelines. He, he gets after it, but they're a lot of fun to watch. I ask you come out and support them, and then our junior high programs are, have been so good throughout the year, our coaches are really getting after it down there and doing a great job. Junior high basketball's up and running, the girls, 1-0 started out this week strong, and Toya and the boys will start next week in Dalhart. So lots of stuff going on athletically. Hope to continue to get to practice and play over Thanksgiving break. Don't know when the last time Perryton played Thanksgiving football was, but have a really great opportunity in front of us, and thank you all for the support, the stipend, the retention bonus was huge for all of our coaching staff. You know, we have a bunch of kiddos on that coaching staff and a bunch of mamas and daddies that I know that that will help tremendously, so thank y'all for that. Any questions? Awesome, thank y'all.
I just start off, just kind of like everybody else, we thank y'all very much for the extra stipend. I've seen some joyful tears myself. It was pretty heart touching to see some of the people, the timing was perfect for some. So I just want to reiterate, thank y'all very much for what you did. Excuse me. As far as on the maintenance side, I really don't have much to add. We've still running electricity. They finished up running all the pipe, they start pulling wire today to the two units in high school. Still waiting on duck work, it was supposed to be here today, it's been pushed back to the 20th now, from what I'm understanding. We have one little, I'm sorry?
November.
That's what I'm understanding. He just said the 20th.
Didn't want to box themselves in, Wes.
I'm praying it's still November. We did have a hiccup on the breaker that we ordered over a year ago when we had E3. You know, look at all this stuff, and they said, y'all better get this breaker because you can't find them anymore. So we did have a place that found two, so we bought two to have a spare. They wrote down the numbers that we needed, so we got the right breaker, we got the front lug kit, but we didn't get the back lug kit because we didn't have a number to order off that. So right now, B&amp;G Electric is, been searching, trying to find that lug kit to attach the breaker to the sub panel. So I'll say a little prayer about that. He seen, he thinks he can find it, he thought he had it a couple of weeks ago, and they got it in, and it was the wrong one, so. Old equipment, sometimes it's hard to find stuff for. But like I said, they're still moving along. Hopefully the duck work will get here and get that in. We just really need the lug panel to come in pretty quick also. Gas is, I think finished running today to them, so electricity and duck work, and we should be able to get fired up pretty quick. Any questions for me?
I do, Bart. Hello. Everything is going great. I really don't have anything new to ask the report.
When do you think you'll have the, the results or the numbers on the, the new setups? This winter sometime or next month?
Oh, the bidding process ends this month, at the end of this month. So once it ends, we'll have access to that information. Right now, we can really see the bands.
We start talking about it December end where? Other questions? That's the same this year.
Kind of hard to maneuver that. Very short report this month, we are busy testing. I will tell you that the special ed population in Perryton continues to rise, which means my job along with Brittany's is to figure out how to pay for it. So we're, we're working on it, and we're staying on top of things, but my ladies are working very hard. If you hear of any speech path who's looking for a job, I need them. I need them yesterday. That's it, any questions for me?
Ranger Roundup.
Hide him back there. I just want to echo what a lot of everybody else has shared, we really appreciate the stipend that was shared with all of the district, our staff over at Ranger Roundup and Little Troopers. We're just very grateful, and it's always nice to bring them a little bit of joy in some of the end-of-the-year times when it's hard to get over the last hump before the holidays, so we really all appreciated that. And I do want to add to my report that we received one more increase to the subsidy that we received. It was by one penny in one of our classrooms, but we appreciate all our little pennies we can get. So I signed the amendment form yesterday on that, so we will start seeing that in the next two weeks. Any questions? Thank you.
Need to be issued again?
I'm just echoing what everybody said, the stipend, y'all don't have to do that, but we're very grateful that y'all did, it means a lot. I put on there that we were going to get night locks for every door, but what I didn't realize until we discussed it later is that not all doors can have them in some buildings because the asbestos issue. So, once we do the bond and everything, hopefully all of that will get taken care of and we can implement those. And then Brittany has some other really great news about safety. Do you have any questions for me regarding anything else? Okay.
We learned late last week, we were awarded $436,000 on a new safety grant, similar to the $200,000, not similar, it's called Cycle 1 of a safety grant, of the $200,000 that we received last year. So now we've received $636,000 for safety. One thing we can do with it is the Kinder needs a secured playground area so we can redo their fence. There's a decent amount that we can do with it. We're pretty good on doors at this point, and we don't want to do them at high school and Wright, where they're about to rip them out, or who knows, they can reuse them, but we're going to put it first to the priorities that we need.
Good.
Other questions?
Thank you. I feel like I keep repeating the same thing at each meeting of we still don't have accountability ratings. Um, they did release a couple of days ago, the raw scores, not our component scores. So we don't really know how each campus or district will end up. I made a phone call today. You're all aware of the litigation for accountability. They're not expecting any ratings to be released before February 15th. If anything will be released this year at all. So.
Do we have a idea, like we kind of know what the effects of the litigation are because we're asking, they're asking for that, that one change.
In the CCMR?
Right. So, so do we, is there a window there? I'm just pushing here because I'm kind of curious. Is there a window there where we can range it or is it, is it something that's unknowable until we?
We, we can get an idea, um, for the most, I need to work with Region 16 with their support to kind of shore up some numbers to be more confident to come and say, I think this is where we could be if they do release.
Yes, I think, I think that's the point. I, because you say litigation, I see a clock that goes like this.
It very well could, yeah. Yeah.
Be good to know. I just want to be happy about it. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I also, one thing we like to do once in a while, maybe you guys are looking for something in school or in program or in this case, I asked for the, a little overview of CCMR. I know that's been a topic of conversation that I'm not sure for any before I got here. So, um, I can say a little, a little overview of CCMR, what counts, how it counts. Um, some of the things, uh, they call outcome bonuses, there's some details in there. I just want to make sure, especially some of our new board members, they not have gotten, um, used to this or heard this before. Um, so just kind of get us on the same page after we talk a little bit about CCMR.
Yes, thank you. Um, CCMR is college, career, military ready. Um, to be considered college ready by the state of Texas, there are a few ways our students can achieve college ready. It's, uh, we score a three on an AP exam. They meet the TSI in both reading and math. They earn nine hours of dual credit in any subject or three hours in English or three hours in math in dual credit. Earn an associate's degree, complete an on-ramps course in any subject and earn college credit or successfully complete a college preparatory course. For a student to be considered, considered career ready by the state of Texas, they need to earn either an industry-based certification, graduate with a completed IEP, which is individualized education plan and workbook readiness, earn a level one or two certificate, or graduate under an advanced diploma and be identified as a current special education student. For military ready, they need to enlist in one of the grades of the armed services.
Oh, here's mine.
Yes.
So does everyone understand, do y'all understand what TSI is? It's similar to ACT and SIT, but it's, that's a national test. That's TSI is Texas. They developed this, uh, college readiness test. And the on-ramps course, this is a course that's offered is, um, special program through UTE. And when a kid is in an on-ramps course, it's kind of a unique program. They can, they go through the course until the end of the, end of the course and then they can take their final grade and they get to choose if they want to just keep that as high school credit only, or if they want to have it as dual credit. So it's really a, it's a unique program to where, you know, if, if a kid is in that program, if they do so well of that semester, he can choose, well, I just want to take this high school rather than affecting my college. Uh, we, we do that in physics right now, but then also if they, if they complete on-ramps or choose for college credit, they qualify.
No, you're good. Thank you for adding that. Okay. This is the point system for the accountability. And I'm going to look on my, my page because that's really small font for Donna to read in her glasses. It's, where's my page for that? Um, each graduate who accomplishes either college career or military, they are, receive one point from the district. And the total points is divided by the, the total number of graduates by the points earned for CCMR. And remember there's a one-year lag for data for the accountability purposes. CCMR and accountability, so the, the bullseye there are the three domains. Domain one is student achievement. Domain two is school progress. Domain three is closing the gap. Domains one and two, um, account for 70% of our accountability rating. 40% of domain one comes from our C, it's CCMR result. Also in part B of domain two, the relative performance, it also looks at our CCMR comparing it to similar, um, sized districts. Closing the gap is a federal component of accountability and that accounts for 30%. So what we're doing at Perryton ISD for our students to achieve CCMR for college, they're able to take AP courses. They're able to take dual credit courses. We offer on-ramps like Mr. Brown said in physics and then also college bridge classes. So this is the college preparatory class. Students that haven't met that T, um, TSI requirement, they can take a college bridge to earn them TSI. For career, these are just a few of our, um, certificates or industry-based certifications. We have welding and then the two tests there. Uh, we have nursing, aviation, the new program, the educational aid as well as cosmetology. Okay. So this is when we get into the outcomes bonuses, which is additional funding on top of the CTE funding that we receive. So on the left side, and I know that's super small up there, I apologize, but this lot is from TEA. But on the left side, these are again, just reiterated how we receive CCMR points for our students. Um, it's the, the TSI, the dual credit, the AP, the industry-based certifications and listening to military. But to receive that additional funding is a much more rigorous, um, system. So to be able to get the outcomes bonus, a student has to earn an associate's degree or meet TSI criteria in reading and math and enroll in college their fall semester immediately following graduation. To earn outcomes bonus for career ready, they also have to meet the TSI standards in reading and math and earn an IVC, an industry-based certification or a level one or two. And then the military, they have to enlist in the, in a branch and pass the ASVAB test. The outcomes bonus, um, again, this is how we receive additional funding. Um, for, sorry, this is really small. For economically disadvantaged students above a certain threshold, we receive $5,000. For students that are identified as non-economically disadvantaged above a certain threshold, we receive $3,000. And for our special education students above a threshold, um, we receive $2,000. And actually, let me make a correction. There's not a threshold for special education. So if they meet any of those other criterias for TSI and, um, and enrolling and their special ed, they automatically qualify. There's not a threshold there. This is the outcomes bonus. Again, I have broken out where, what the scores they have to have on the TSI for them to be considered passing the SAT and the ACT along with the earned associate's degree or enrolled in a college. You can see the composite score is a 23 on the ACT test. For the career outcomes bonus, again, is the same scale for the college entrance exam, same expectations on the scores and receive an industry-based certification or a level one or two certificate. And there's the military outcomes bonus list and the ASVAB passing score. So the bonus for graduates above, just for any question. Okay. The, this is the threshold that's set by the state and it's based on statewide, statewide percentile. So the non-economically disadvantaged students, 24%. Students above their threshold that meet the criteria for outcomes bonus, we receive that funding. It's 11% for economically disadvantaged. And again, there's not a threshold for the special education students. This data is two years behind for outcomes bonus. The state, of course, does give us some allowable or suggestive uses for spending, uh, CCMR money. You can see it's for to support college advising for our counselors and teachers. And then also it's supporting, um, the students for dual credit ACT, um, AP courses and whatnot. On these two grads, so this is 2019 graduates and outcomes bonus did not become into effect until a high school decree, which was passed in June of 2019. So this would be the first group of graduates that were eligible for outcomes bonuses. If you look at the chart, there were 77 economically disadvantaged students. That threshold going back to the other slot is at 11%. So we needed eight students, um, or excuse me, we needed more than eight students to be able to get an outcomes bonus there. And you see, we only had six students to meet that criteria. So we did not receive any money for economically disadvantaged this year, which we would have received the money in 2021 because of that two-year lag. Non-economically disadvantaged students, there are, there were 89 graduates. That threshold is higher at 24%. Um, any students above that 21, we would receive that $3,000. And we had four students above that threshold. And we did not have any special education students. So you see for that year of the money that we received. The following years for 2020, received the money in '22. You can see there is an increase in the, in the amount of money that we did gain from one year to the next year. And then flipping on to the third table is the most recent data that we do have from TEA. There are 22 graduates. Um, excuse me, let me back up. Actually, this is what I have. My machine's not working. Sorry. Is that right? Okay, sorry. So 21 graduates, um, this is the most recent we do have from TEA. You can see those numbers have increased again. So steadily we are gaining, um, increased funding in our out, in our out base funding category.
Which, which this, and I'm just wondering, see, we are not the progress number of students that we have in CCMR. So the first year that outcomes bonus was around, we only got 12,000. Each year we've had more students, uh, meet the CCMR, uh, the CCMR criteria, which increases your chance of getting an outcome bonus now.
This is what I have projected. So that's my disclaimer, I projected this. And I wasn't a math teacher. Remember that. Um, based on the, the 23 graduates, 22 graduates?
22 graduates.
Sorry, 22 graduates. So this would be funding hopefully Brittany is going to see this fiscal year. And I have projected $128,000. And I really want, I would attribute this to the high school counselors tracking these kiddos. I've seen this spreadsheet that Ms. Wade and Ms. Cunningham have created and it's a pretty elaborate spreadsheet where they've got a category for every way to meet CCMR as well as the outcomes bonus. And they've got, it's color coded for students. And so they're reviewing that and they brought in ways like the college bridge to try to shore up some of those kiddos that if maybe they're not meeting TSI, um, they are successful with the college bridge.
So a couple of things for you guys, so you know some things we are doing. Um, the college bridge, that college prep class. So when, when students, we have put that class in advance, put some of your class, we have embedded the college bridge in the English. So every student who has not met the CCMR criteria is enrolled in the college prep class through that. So they're receiving the college prep material as well for your school. Um, and, and basically then it becomes a pass fail. They pass their English class with that, with that study and they're going to get that. Um, so, and, so this is, and this is one of the ways that our counselors have worked to, to make our numbers better. Um, and as you can see, they've, they've made some progress. Um, now we, we're not going to be, we're working towards the 88%. Um, hopefully we'll get a little bit of break from the lawsuit, but it won't be that many years. But, um, but we're setting that out as a goal so that we reach that 88%. And our counselors have been working hard to try and keep this up. Um, so you know, talking about the funding, I know we talked some about it. Really two ways to get more funding for CCMR. One is the outcomes bonus that we just talked about. And the state has those levels set and for every, for every, um, every child you have above that percentage, you know, if you, if the state says 24% for, for economically disadvantaged and, and economically disadvantaged, and we have 28%, that's 4% of our kids that we're going to get extra money. Um, and, and so we're working hard and trying to make sure our kids qualify for that. The other way to get extra money in CCMR is to have higher level classes. We get there for the higher level classes. And so the counselors have also worked through our master schedule to make sure that our classes are coded right in teams so that we are drawing the, the correct amount of funding for those classes. So, um, partly I wanted to make sure we all are kind of on the same page, especially when we begin this spring semester. Um, but also just to let you guys know, give you a little bit of what we've been doing and the progress we have made with the outcomes to CCMR. I don't know that I can answer all questions, but you guys, any question, any to answer? This is alien. If you have any questions? No. If not, thank you.
Just seeing the progress is a great, has been a focus of this quarter a while. To be able to, I think we left some, some dollars on the table and it seems like we've got, got all of our horses pulled in the same direction right now. So that's, that's a great progress. See those four?
Um, the audit books sitting in front of y'all are just.
We can really audit and the policy.
You can, yes.
I think he probably will.
Texas with any concerns, please. Page number, please.
I can do that.
Okay. As far as disbursements, there's nothing out of the ordinary. You go all the way to page 77. Looks like a deficit. We just haven't received all of our local funding and our state funding. But everything's fine. As you look through the supplementary pages behind each one, um, we're at about 16% this year. So we're running a little high on expenses, but at 19 and a half at the end, but just because we're in session right now. Um, we're running pretty close. If I run a T2, we're within 100,000 of what the state's going to give us for the year. So we're looking fine on that. And then I ran our redefined ADA and it's actually 1832. So I know on page 93, it says our average daily membership is 1874, but like I always say, I think, I'll put saying it next time, but our half day pre-K, they only, they don't pull a full day funding. Not much to report right now.
Any questions? We'll have to meet in a closed meeting to discuss the alternate course. Well, my thanks and stuff. Texas government code, personnel, just by 1.074. The board will replace the vote, we, and the action board, which should take result discussions in a closed session, will replace, after the board convenes, we will convene this now. Six.